Recording in progress.
Okay, you all set?
Yep, we're recording.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Peter Basserman, I'm Chairman of the Branford and Inland Wetland Commission. Uh, we're gonna open a regular meeting of the commission this evening, it is March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, this evening's meeting will be conducted using the platform uh, in accordance with Public Act twenty-two dash three. Documents referenced this evening are on the town's uh, agency's website and available at the town hall. Uh, final agenda for today's meeting uh, was filed on March twelfth and is also available uh, on the town's website. Um, staff, any changes to the agenda this evening? I think there's a typo.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, no changes, but I did wanna indicate there is a typo under item eight A. I should say, to allow room addition to extend an additional three feet. Is that what you're referring to?
That uh, was not, but under the minutes of the site walk. What am I, what am I looking at as a date of the twenty-fourth?
Yes, you're right, that should say uh, March twelfth. So there's two typos.
Um, can we move forward without having to vote on this, or?
I mean, I think you could still vote on it with the correction, um, given that it's minutes. But if you feel more comfortable, you could table it.
Yeah, I'd like to move forward on that, so they do a roll. Um, and uh, before that, uh, just a, a word of, of uh, information, uh, BCTV is recording this evening. So please make sure that your face is visible when speaking, mute your microphone when uh, not talking to eliminate the potential audio feedback. Uh, if you wish to speak when there are comments, um, uh, as part of the forum, please use the raise your hand feature uh, so that we can be, uh, you can be recognized. And uh, I guess at this point, we'll now take a roll call, uh, please indicate your presence by saying aye. Commissioner Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Here. Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum, aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, present.
Commissioner Papentopoulos?
Commissioner Papentopoulos, are we voting on whether we're, are we saying whether we're here?
Just taking a roll call.
Okay, aye, here, whatever.
I'm sorry?
I wasn't sure if you were taking attendance or whether you were, whether, whether we're voting on something.
Just the roll call.
Okay.
Um, any um, any commissioner this evening have to recuse themselves from any of the items on the posted agenda?
Uh, okay. This is Commissioner Armrod, I, I guess I'll just state for the record that I did review the meeting, the recording of the meeting from February twenty-seventh. Um, so I am uh, up to date.
Thank you for that. Now we'll do the minutes for approval, we have February twenty-seven, uh, two thousand twenty-five, the regular meeting minutes. There a motion to entertain those minutes?
This is Commissioner Gokowski, I put a motion forward to accept the minutes as presented to the commission.
Commissioner Papentopoulos, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions?
Mr. Boda, all abstained.
Any uh, denials? Okay, now we have the minutes of the site walk conducted on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, with previously noted exceptions of the date, which is uh, March twelfth. Should read March twelfth on the, as well as instead of addition, the word additional on page uh, I think it's all on single page, uh, of those, then, uh, Page two, do we have a, uh, motion to approve those minutes?
This is Commissioner Begum to make a motion that we approve the site walk minutes from three twelve twenty-five.
Commissioner Gokowski, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Commissioner Boda, all abstained.
Commissioner Armrod, all abstained as well.
Yeah, we still have a quorum, okay, we still, um, and hmm, I guess we can move forward to the agenda. We have tabled inland wetland twenty-five oh one oh one for a public hearing to be scheduled, uh, that was scheduled on March twenties, or March twenty-seventh. Uh, so we have item four B inland wetland twenty-five oh one, three oh one Maple Street. Renovations to yard space within a hundred feet of the water course, we had the site walk yesterday. Um, just a brief overview from um, uh, I guess somebody representing one Maple, be appropriate at this point?
Yes, good evening, this is Jim Gallagher from Napis and Young Engineers. Uh, we did walk the site yesterday, um, and uh, with, with a quorum and um, as the application stands today, it's uh, to uh, um, clear some brush on the property. Um, put up a uh, a fence, either a chain link or a uh, uh, vinyl fence and uh, topsoil and seed the uh, the back of the property.
Any additional information, Commissioner Basserman, any additional information uh, since the last meeting provided for this uh, application?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, the applicant has submitted a revised site plan since the last app, since the last meeting. Um, they've re, they've submitted a letter uh, commenting on the stability of the bank. Um, and I've also received photos from the uh, applicant and the applicant's engineer, and I've also added site walk photos to the file as well. In addition to the two thousand and thirteen letter that was referenced at the last meeting, um.
Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, can you post that letter regarding the structural integrity of the bank?
Um, this is Commissioner Boda, just uh, logistical question, are we looking at the file oh four B? Or are we looking at oh five A, the note, we're looking at the um, oh four B, right? Three oh one Maple, yeah, okay. The application. Okay, thank you. Just real quick, before I show the letter, I'm gonna show uh, a GIS map for those that weren't out on the site yesterday. Uh, is everyone seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, so the property is on the corner of Swift Street and Maple Street, you can see three oh one right here. Um, and on the eastern side of the property, there is a water course, um, which is the area of concern. Um, and so the letter. So, I do wanna clarify that the correspondence in two thousand and thirteen um, wasn't an enforcement action, it was a notification to the property owner that they, in case they were not aware of the condition. Um, so on the revised site plan that was submitted, there are three pictures that the uh, project engineer took of the bank and three, the three pictures from the inland wetland office filed in two thousand and thirteen. Um, I did compile to try and make it a little bit easier, um, I kinda tried to group the photos that were of the same section of the bank, so uh, got this leaning tree here, which I'm pretty sure is this tree here. Um, and you can kinda see at the end of the wall here, there's a larger uh, concrete block, and that appears to be this block here. Um, and then further up, the water course closer to the head wall, we've got um, a picture looking straight up, and then a picture looking straight on, so I think this rock here is likely this rock here, uh, and this tree is likely that tree. Um, and you see the fence that's falling over here and here. Um.
So, this is Commissioner Gokowski, so um, based, what, what I see from the pictures in the site walk yesterday, the bank virtually has, uh, it's been untouched since two thousand and thirteen. Um, I, I, I wouldn't wanna start messing with it if nothing's going on.
Jamie Frederick. Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I, I, I think at this point, the main concern would be whether or not any of the proposed activity is likely to impact the stability of that bank, so I think that's kind of what the letter was submitted to try and address, um, in regards to the discussion that was um, had at the last meeting. Uh, so like I said, back in two thousand and thirteen, there was no enforcement action taken, there was a notification. Um, when the application was originally submitted, the, the post fence was right along the top of the bank. It has since been moved off the top of the bank a little bit. Um, so I, I think the primary concern would be uh, any impact of, you know, driving in the fence posts, um, and then any impact from root, um, the stability that roots are adding to that area based on the understory vegetation that was removed. Um, on that end, I do have a question for the applicant. Is any additional vegetation proposed to be removed in addition to what's already been removed, it's a little bit unclear from the uh, the brief narrative that was submitted today.
I, I believe the uh, the app, the uh, the owner is here, so I think uh, Steve, if you're there, then you should speak.
I'm here and uh, there will be no uh, other vegetation taken out of the property.
This is Commissioner Basserman, I guess how are the fence posts to be placed?
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you could repeat, please.
How are the fence posts to be placed um, in the ground? By what means, machine, man?
I'll answer that, we're gonna use, uh, we're gonna do it, we're gonna dig it by hand, we will not use any machines, we will not disrupt any of the bank area close to the river area, we're gonna do it by hand, and we're gonna stay a minimum of at least ten feet away from the uh, the bank.
Just for clarification on that, Commissioner Bassman again, that's ten feet from the bank as the bank obviously is not straight, it doesn't take a jog, that ten feet minimum will be maintained regardless of the jog?
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I guess I also have a follow-up question for uh, Napis and Young. In, in the picture, Jamie, can you put that first picture up that had the bank with the uh, it, it looked like landscape timbers or something holding uh, back the um, soil on the bank? Yeah, that.
This one might, this is a different one, but I think it should, might show it a bit better.
Same idea, yeah, that, that's fine, I, I, I guess my question is, what are the uh, elements of that um, ha, wall, uh, that has given it, in your opinion, the stability over the period two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-five?
You know, what it, uh, what you see there is a uh, a mix of various uh, uh, stone and uh, concrete. It almost looked like pillars that are on their side, that have been assembled in kind of a uh, I'll, I'll call it a hodgepodge uh, method. Um, you know, my conclusion was really based on the fact that how little change has happened over the last uh, uh, twelve or thirteen years. Um, in addition, um, the, the vegetation that has grown, you know, as you can see that one big tree right in the middle of that picture there on the right. Um, you know, adds to the stability of the, of the embankment because of the root system. So um, I know last uh, meeting, you know, there was a discussion about um, uh, what if we just kind of spruced it up or built it up? If you touch this at all, the whole thing will come down. The, as it stands now, you know, it's, it's, it's uh, stable and um, it's uh, hasn't moved or changed significantly in, in thirteen years. Um, and, and more than that, uh, at this point, the applicant's not proposing to, to do any uh, activity in the, in the water course itself.
And, and to continue that discussion, is it just the weight of the, the, the timbers and the, the stone material, I mean, there's no rebar going through those timbers to hold it?
No, this is strictly a, what they call a gravity wall.
And, and there's no concern regarding trees that are growing with the root system that might undermine that?
Well, I don't think they'll undermine it, they may, uh, they may fortify it more than anything else because of their uh, entanglement into the uh, the openings that are between the uh, the, the uh, wall elements. Um, the, you know, there's, there's no question, you know, there's no denying that this is an ugly looking wall. Um, however, you know, I haven't seen any, you know, significant change over time that makes me believe that uh, um, that anything is uh, is migrating or, or, or deflecting in this wall.
And again, as a follow-up, and, and, and you're basing that on a comparison of two thousand thirteen photos to a visual inspection uh, done currently?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Um, this is Commissioner Papentopoulos, I have a, a question about more um, disturbance of the ground because there are a lot of stumps in in the area, um, that would be in the upland review, you, you're not gonna grind any of those or anything like that?
No, no, I, I recommended to Steve and he agreed that uh, there'll be no stumping whatsoever, you see in his letter here.
Okay.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, this afternoon I got um, a, a brief response stating after speaking with you today, I wanted to inform you that we will not be removing any stumps on the premises and will be cutting any tree stumps and will
I think he's, I think he's missing a knot.
Um, can you clarify, Mr. Dosty?
I will not be removing any stumps at, on any part of this property, I will be just cutting them evenly to the ground. Putting some topsoil, putting grass seed, grow some grass, plant the, you know, and then put up a fence by hand, digging the holes to put up the fence, and that's it, that's all we're gonna be doing.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so to clarify, as far as where you're planning to put topsoil and seed, would, would that be the areas that are currently strawed right now?
That's correct.
And you're not clearing anything else?
Absolutely not.
And uh, would you be planning on establishing lawn in between the proposed vinyl fence and the top of the bank, or would you be looking to do some other treatment over there, maybe perhaps a native seed mix?
I could do um, I could do, I could plant grass from behind the fence to the edge of the uh, of the river or bank, or I could put uh, plants if you want, but I wasn't planning on doing too much on that part, but I definitely will put uh, topsoil and some grass to control the top of it.
This is Commissioner Bassman, what's the pitch when you're all sudden done with putting in the uh, in, in the, in the lawn, the, does it pitch toward the water course or stormwater, or how does it travel?
Yes, yes, the uh, the, the, the property has about a one percent slope uh, from the house towards the water course.
This is Commissioner Gokowski, when I walked the property yesterday, um, yeah, I, I can picture I'm a, I remember this property when the property was first done, and that backyard was absolutely gorgeous, green, grass, the whole ball of wax. If they're, if they're looking to restore it to its, what it probably used to be, um, I mean, I, I think it's a step in the right direction of stabilizing that whole area, uh, stabilizing the bank with the, the grass growing. Um, to get, get a better root system going, but um, I, I think they're, at this stage of the game, what, what they're proposing to do is probably um, very smart and to fix the property, I mean, the property's been decayed for a long time, and at least they're taking the steps, I feel, in the right direction.
Commissioner Bassman, there was a couple of dead trees um, along the line where you're going to be putting the fence. Any plans to take down those dead trees, or are we leaving them there?
Well, I'm not sure if Steve is planning on taking down the dead trees, but if he does, I recommend that the root system remain. Because uh, in fact, I, I, if, if the trees are dead, I'm gonna suggest that they should come down, only because if they do uh, fall, um, I don't want them to uproot uh, along the edge of the bank.
Right, right. Steve, what are we doing with those dead trees?
I would like to cut them out and leave the roots there because they're actually an eyesore, so I would think it would be in advantageous to take, you know, the dead trees that are on my fence, on the, you know, on the right side of the property, cut them out to, and then uh, that's it, just cut them off, you know.
And, and the choke carry at the other end of the property is actually the one that I'm most concerned about.
Exactly, yes, so.
Okay. Can, can we um, on a plot plan, just indicate which trees would be cut? And what root system would, would remain?
Yeah.
For the record?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is Commissioner Begum, and I don't know if we have pictures of what the vegetation looked like along the bank before the clearing, but my con, my con, my concern is just there's gonna be now some other type of vegetation right up to the edge of this wetlands. And in thinking about how to reduce whatever, I don't know where the gutter system works, or the, the flow from the house goes toward the backyard, goes toward the the water course, but it'd be nice to have a buffer that's not um, fertilized, not pesticide it right on the edge of that. Um, and before, there was probably a bunch of bushes that were serving that purpose or that function. I don't know, Jamie, if you know what was there ahead of time, if there's any?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, when I went out to see the site before clearing occurred, there was definitely vegetation as to what it was, I am not sure, um, it was pretty dense, the understory vegetation, so I couldn't, we couldn't get to the, the water course. Um, I will point out that if you look at um, some of the old pictures from two thousand thirteen, you zoom in here. You can see that there, there was a lawn area back in two thousand thirteen that looks like it extended pretty close to the top of the bank. Um, so it definitely has grown in due to a difference or lack of routine upkeep, um, not to say that the vegetation that was there wasn't necessarily ideal, but um, you know, it, it, it definitely was a changing condition. Um.
This, this is Commissioner Gokowski again, as I, as I stated on the site walk last night, I'm, I'm familiar with the layout of this property prior to this overgrown area, um, that whole backyard um, was all lawn and very well manicured lawn, that whole that whole property on the pie, that triangle, was absolutely gorgeous, um, going down Maple Street back in the day. So, I believe that whole backyard where they had the patio area and everything like that was all, it was all grass, it was all grass. And from what I can see where they're proposing to put the fence, the ten feet off the, the um, the bank and putting grass on that side of the house, face, you know, closer to the house, I don't think it's gonna be a detriment, I think it's gonna I think it's gonna be a positive area, uh, idea to keep, keep that, you know, put some stability back in that soil and that land, so it would take hold again. put some stability back in that soil and that land so it would take hold again.
Mr. Bassman, but, you know, whether it's vegetation or a small berm, I guess, uh, if the lawn is going to have, um, fertilizer, pesticide treatment or whatever, um, is that something that the applicant could consider uh, as a protection measure for the water course?
Well, one of the things that, uh, and I'll just throw this out for discussion purposes is that, uh, um, that he, we could, uh, mulch the area between the fence and the top of the bank. And, um, that would, uh, that would be that the, the biological activity of the mulch itself will assist in, in, uh, kind of breaking down the, any kind of pesticides or fertilizers. Uh, I wouldn't want to put a, a physical berm there because then that would have a tendency to try and channel the water in a, in any one specific location rather than having sheet flow across the back of the property. But, uh, a mulch zone, uh, of significance, you know, thick to maybe six inches or so between the, uh, the fence and, um, the, uh, top of the bank would, would create a, a biological, uh, activity area in case there was any pesticides or, uh, uh, fertilizers.
Mr. Bassman, are you okay with that, Mr. Begaman?
Um, I'm not, don't have the expertise to know, um, what would be better mulch or plants. Um, and I don't know if the commission generally makes these kinds of recommendations. I don't have that kind of experience. It's just, it's kind of unique in that the property goes right up to a steep, a steep kind of cliff into, into, into the water.
Yeah, there's no, there's no transitional section of the wetlands between the water course and the upland review area.
This is Mr. Bassman. Jamie, do you have an opinion on, um, what might work here?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so I, I mean, we, we don't design projects. Um, certainly, uh, we'll take, you know, consideration of proposals. Uh, to clarify, when you say six inches of, of mulch, do you mean like six, six inches deep over that 10 foot spread or do you mean like a six?
Yeah, yeah, a, a good, a good 10 foot swath of, of, uh, of wood chips, that type of thing. Uh, it creates a, like almost a biotreatment type of area. Um, you know, when, when you have, uh, chemicals and pesticides and fertilizers, um, the, the, uh, the wood mass can have a tendency to, uh, to adsorb and absorb uh, some of the, uh, some of the, uh, the chemicals that are in the runoff.
Um, this is Commissioner Boda. Um, what was your background again? I, I missed it.
Me? I'm a professional engineer.
Okay. Um... I, I see where, uh, Commissioner Begaman is coming from and I, I I tend to have the same curiosity and I'm, I'm wondering if, um, you've looked at all to some of the other, because we don't, we don't design. Um, we do look to our engineers to design, uh, but I'm wondering if you've looked at any of the other options that revolve more around plantings, um, in the stormwater manual that would rely more on planting because, you know, those synthetic fertilizers, um, and pesticides, we do know, um, are just detrimental to soil function, soil microbial activity. Um, and so, you know, maybe you get some mitigation from the, um, the, some, some wood chips, but if you had something of an exclusion zone prior to that area and you did some, some other plantings in a smaller strip, again, um, this is a thought, this is a thought exchange, uh, for you, um, that that may act as a, another way of ensuring that we maintain soil health, which will, um, ensure that those things that are being added to the lawn do not migrate into that water course, seeing the, the proximity that we're, we're looking at. Because ultimately that's our focus.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to answer your question, but, uh, this is, this, tonight is the first of addressing this, this 10 foot strip as far as treatment area. So I have, so the answer is no, I have not given any consideration because it just came up tonight.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, but it's certainly there, there are, you know, there are multitude of options, combination of options.
There's a lot of, you know, they, I, I, I feel like, uh, DEEP and, and Yukon, the, the, the clear program, they did a really nice job putting together, um, some, some thoughtful options, um, that are accessible to homeowners. They're not particularly expensive or engineering heavy, um, and certainly maintainable. And, um, so certainly worth looking into. And like I said, ma- maintaining the, the soil health is going to be important, um, in that particular area. And I do, you know, I, I just, as, as we were looking at pictures, uh, earlier, I do wonder a little bit. I, I, I know that in earlier you, you mentioned that the site is stable and it looks stable. I do, I, I was not able to make the site walk. We had, um, parent conferences. So I had a very long day while you all were out at the site walk. I was locked in the public schools from early morning until late in the evening. Um, but, uh, I, I do wonder about scouring underneath, um, and a, uh, 11-year window in terms of geologic time is not really a good sample size. So it's stable for now, but again, uh, in geologic time, that doesn't really, 11 years isn't anything, right?
Well, I will agree with that. I think that, uh, um, in the end, the, the applicant is, is, is saying as, as he's, as it sits today, he's, he's not intending to, to, to mess with that, with that wall.
That's fair. I, I wouldn't want to mess with it either. I, and I think it makes sense to, you know, maintain as much root structure as possible. Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I did get a comment from the engineering department. They had suggested, um, potentially looking at putting a gate in the fence, um, so that access to that 10-foot strip, uh, would be available, um, for a maintenance and or, you know, routine inspections so the property owner can kind of keep an eye on the condition and, you know, re- remain confident that it's not changing and that nothing would need to happen with that bank, assuming that that's how the commission, um, you know?
Yeah, that's ver- that's very durable, Jamie.
Um, I do think that having some sort of vegetation added back in would help keep, you know, some root, some active roots. I, I guess my concern and it's not, I would say it's not terribly educated and it is a concern, not a, uh, opinion or, but, uh, I'd be a little bit concerned that the addition of six inches of, of mulch would just kind of help potentially speed up decomposition. Um, so I think by adding some, some plant material in there, uh, whether it's shrubs or, 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 um, erosion control mix or something, granted that's not going to likely necessarily give you the water quality treatment. Um, or if it's some mix of a mulched area and erosion control seeding, um, you know, like split the difference or something. Um, I think that that would be something worth looking at.
Some of those erosion control meadowy kind of mix, they are quite beautiful and they only need to be mowed once a year, twice a year, and they are quite pretty. If you don't, if you're not totally requiring a soft course.
Um, one other question I had is there's only one driveway shown on the site plan. Uh, are you proposing to maintain a driveway off of Swift Street and Maple Street?
Yes, I am. Um, it's actually, it's actually not shown here, but it's actually, there is a concrete driveway that goes from Maple Street to Swift Street. It goes right across and obviously you see the concrete walkway. So it does go from, you know, both sides. It just goes, it's there. It's just not on the plan.
Is there anything else that is there that's not on the plan that you can think of? This is the deck as it is today, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yep. Yeah.
This is Commissioner Bassman. So are we, are we at the point where, um, uh, the applicant and, uh, his, uh, professional engineer will look at providing some kind of, uh, strip uh, along the fence to, um, hopefully veget- with vegetation, hopefully to uh, mitigate, minimize, uh, eliminate, uh, the movement of fertilizer or pesticides from the lawn into the water course? And we view that at the next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting of the commission?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Begaman. There were, I, there was also some, I know you had to stop because there knows a big notice of violation, but there was like a tractor in the back near the water and plastic and there was some other debris. What is the intention of further cleaning up of yard? Is there any?
Well, that's the, uh, the only tractor left of a dozen that were removed. So, uh, yes, it's, all, all of the debris in the back will be removed.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um, when they had first cleared, uh, I, I told them they might want to have somebody look at that wall before they move that tractor based on its, its proximity and not knowing the stability of it and knowing that there was documentation from 10 years ago concerned about the stability of that bank. So, um, I would, I would say unless the commissioners have any concerns with that tractor being removed at this point, if they're feeling confident that, that the bank is stable enough to move it, I'd say it, it could be removed if they won't. For those of you that aren't on the site, I don't know.
Where it is?
Yeah, this, this is Commissioner Goklaski. I, I, I was kind of surprised to see that tractor sitting there, but, um, he only described after he was told not to touch anything. He just left it there. So he did exactly what we told him to do, I guess. So, um, but yeah, that, there's a couple of things over there that, you know, need to be cleaned up and they're trying to clean up the property.
Okay.
I think it's safe, I think it's safe to say that any, uh, non-natural materials that are there back, especially in this particular photo is, uh, will be, uh, will be taken out.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Jamie, you had a comment?
Is there anything else that commissioners be looking to see at the next meeting, uh, in an effort to keep things moving?
This is Commissioner Armored. I guess just to, uh, uh, emphasize what Commissioner Boda said about, you know, there are some good resources about plantings and especially in sort of these riparian zones and next to streams. Um, so yeah, that, uh, you know, it would be nice to at least review those and consider them as part of a, uh, as, as far as planting plans go back there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item five now. Don't go too far. Notice of violation 301 Maple Street, removal of vegetation without a permit.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I'd recommend continuing as well to the March 27th meeting. Um, and usually the commission
Need a motion?
Notice of violation. I'm sorry?
Need a motion?
No, I don't. I think we can just state and have a general consensus. Unless there's any concerns that the property owner would like to raise. Um...
I'm good.
All right.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, I, I guess question in, um, in the NOV, is, is there anything regarding the NOV that was not discussed when we talked about the item inland wetland 250201?
I don't believe, um, I guess the one thing is it says install inlet protection in the catch basin adjacent. And I noticed that the, the catch basin didn't have inlet protection. I also noticed it didn't look like it was impacted, but we are moving into the spring season. So maybe until there's a, you know, vegetation establishment, um, there's a catch basin right here and there should be inlet protection in that, just to make sure that nothing's getting into the water course.
I actually purchased it. I will, uh, install it. I'll, I'll get out there this week and put it in.
Great.
As far as the, the property, I don't know if anyone's seen it prior to me purchasing it, but it was, um, there was a lot of trees that were all over, knocked down. So it was in a really bad situation and I couldn't even have access to anywhere. Uh, that, that was the, so that's the front of the house. I couldn't even get to the house. So we're all talking about me clearing without a permit, but when I walked through here, I couldn't even get access to the house. So I only cut the trees that were down. That's how bad it was. So we're all talking about something that I did, but these trees were all down on top of my house. So I only cut the trees that were down all over my property. And as far as the little saplings or, you know, little trees, we, you know, we just, we didn't cut, we just cleaned up the property. So it, it was pretty bad.
There certainly was some vegetation that needed to be removed and we had met on site and discussed that, um,
Correct.
With saplings in the back, wish, wish it had, you had waited.
I, I understand. I understand that. I, yes.
Saplings and the brush in the back, but yeah, it was very overgrown. Um, I did get some pictures from the applicant. I will add them into the file for the next meeting if commissioners want to take a look at them.
Great. Okay, I think with consensus, we're moving the notice of violation on 301 Maple Street to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission, which is the 27th, March 27th?
Correct.
Okay. All right, next up, notice of violation 80 North Main Street, expansion of pavement and placement of canvas tent structure for car washing without a permit. And who do we have for the, uh, enforcement action this evening?
Why, Jamie? Sorry, uh, let Al go.
Oh, yeah, um, Al Russgrove. I'm the owner of the property. Um, I actually rent out the car, car wash to a Dave Resnick and a Logan that, that do the detailing. Um, my, my portion here is more of about the pavement and the extra pavement added. And there's Dave Lynn and Logan. They can explain more about the tent.
Hi, Dave Resnick, uh, I'm the father of the owner and husband of the owner, uh, my wife Lynn Resnick and my son Logan Resnick.
What's going on?
All right. So Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, let me just kind of introduce it real quick and then we'll let, let you have an opportunity to, to fill in or, you know, correct if you feel that there's something that needs to be clarified or that I misspoke on.
Okay.
Um, so let me just start off by opening everything.
Not.
So this came to my attention. Um, I was out of the office and the zoning enforcement officer, um, I believe it started because of some non-compliant stairs that needed to be addressed. And when that was being addressed, they became aware that there was a tent... when that was being addressed, they became aware that there was a tent on the property that didn't have permit. And so we kind of are where we are today because of all of that, um. So the notice of violation was issued in regards to the construction and for erection of the tent and, um, some associated pavement changes by and large. Um, I wasn't entirely sure what level of information the commission was going to want for an application. So prior to, um, I figured rather than having them submit an application and find out the information was insufficient potentially, it would be good to start the conversation sooner rather than later. So the tent in question, here's a picture that the zoning enforcement officer had taken when she went out. Um, so this is looking at the back of the property, uh, the land trust owns the property to the rear of the subject property. Um, and it is my understanding that the tent is used for a light car wash. And I will let the applicant, or not, the future applicant, um, dive into what that process is. Um, because they will be much more proficient at it, um. And then in the back of the tent, they have this drainage collection system that they've created, um, which they, they vacuum out and the vacuum has, um, the ability to separate solids and the water from the va- that they vacuum out, they put into a slop sink and goes into the septic system. Um, East Shore District Health was out there when I went out on site last Monday. Um, and they didn't have concerns regarding that practice, um. So, um, let's see, it's just another picture of the drain. And then this is looking back towards the wetland. So the wetland is, I believe on the land trust property, it might, I'm not, we're not entirely sure where the property line is. So, um, but it is beyond where the activity is. So I'm gonna jump over to a GIS map, um, so Route One is off the page over here, if you will, um, the driveway comes off of Route One and, uh, the dark or the gray that you're, you're seeing here is an approximate location of paved areas based off of aerial imagery. So it's not great, especially considering this didn't look like it was formally had different levels of paving slash treatment, um. So I do have some historical aerials we can go through, but you can see the tent here. It's actually been there since I think like two thousand twenty-three, um. And so this is the two thousand nineteen aerial and you can see that the tent isn't there. And you can kind of see the edge of pavement, but you can also see that they were informally using the area as parking. Um, you can see that there's a storage container as well. And then this is a zoomed out image. So here you can see the access off of North Main Street, AKA Route One. Um, and then you can see the, the whole wetland complex on the land trust property and it extends down onto, um, this property down here, which I believe is the property where the commission recently got a car wash application. Um, so you can cut, you can see the wetland delineation on that southern property. Um, and I thought that that would be kind of relevant in understanding where that edge of wetland likely is relative to that. This commissioner, but can you say again when the, when you thought the tent, you said? Um, let me, let me jump over the historical aerials and we'll get the actual answer. Um, so this is twenty sixteen and I think we're going to progress closer to today. So you can see the paved areas and the, the kind of general parking use, if you will. I'm gonna scroll quick. These are in the file and then we can always, um, go back if need be. So again, you can see the use of parking on the site. This one's twenty twenty-one. Here we've got twenty twenty-two. And then here we've got twenty twenty-three. Um, and you can see the time. This one is twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So.
This Commissioner Baserman, the yellow lines, an approximate property line, Jamie, or what are they?
Yeah, they're, so those are approximate parcel boundaries, um. They can be off by quite a bit. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust it to be the property line. I do know that the property owner is investigating the property line location. And I believe he's, I know he was looking to have the property boundary staked out. Looks like he's got his hand raised and would like to add some more.
And may I talk? Yeah, um, so, yeah, um, so basically, um, one of the reasons like I'm more here tonight is yes, um, I purchased the property in two thousand seventeen. Um, I wasn't aware that that stuff was on my property line. And as Jamie can attest, I've, I've moved, I've already moved the storage containers. I've got rid of one. I moved the other one well off the property line. So the only thing on there now is the tents, um, and I'm in the process of emptying that storage unit and also getting rid of that. Um, as far as the pavement, the pavement was very broken up and stuff. And when I purchased the property, again, it was in kind of rough shape. All I intended to do honestly is just clean the place up, um. It's been zoned. There was an auto body shop there and before that, a mechanic in a car dealership, um. I, even though they classify me as a car dealership mechanic, I am not. I'm just a mobile electronics. We don't use any chemicals. I'm not working on cars, no oils. And the traffic that is being parked in cars back there is well under what used to be there. Um, when we were out there for the meeting, the, the gentlemen from the land and trust were also out there. And they brought to my attention that in two thousand sixteen, they actually contracted, uh, Chris Scola Engineering to do a site plan on their land trust. And they said I should contact them. So I did contact them. He was well aware of the property. They actually still have measurements and that sort of thing and the boundary of where the land trust was for them. And according to his measurements, um, there's a little cut out in the pavement that you can kind of see where there used to be a, a shed there. The shed was rotted and decomposing, so I actually tore it down also to clean it up. But from the measurements of that shed, he said twenty-nine feet back is where my property line is. And right now there is a metal stake with like a white marker on it. It's, it's nothing that's concrete. That's like a sign on it from the state or anybody, but from his measurements, that stake is kind of where they staked out where my property line is, which is a good ten to fifteen feet, well beyond where I have the pavement. Um, basically my plea to you is I guess you guys are requiring an A two survey of the property. Um, I have a thing here that I showed Jamie that Chris Scola Engineering said they can do an A two stakeout, which will give me a land record research update of the property and adjoining to verify the record of the property lines. They will perform an in-class A two boundary stake survey of the property. I'm also going to pay a little more to set permanent iron pins with the proper markings that are town and state regulated. And then they're going to put stakes in the middle to basically map out my property line. And I also told Jamie, if my pavement is over the property line, we will work together. I'm not trying to get around anything. I will work together for a resolution. My just plea to you is because of zoning and they're making me do these stairs and I'm pulling all these permits and I'm moving stuff. I'm well, well over fifteen, almost twenty grand into this project. They can do that, the stake line for about a thousand dollars. If you guys make me do a whole A two survey, that's like five or six thousand. I'm a small business, trying to support a family. I'm trying to do what's right. I just think the A two is a little more unnecessary. I'm just hoping you guys will approve the boundary stakeout so I can get a clear cut of where my property is. And then if I am over it, I will do, you know, we will work together on a necessary solution.
This is Commissioner Baserman. Jamie, do you have the documents that Mr., uh, Russgrove just mentioned?
I have, um, a couple of surveys in the file, um. So I just want to clarify real quick, uh, so I, obviously I think the commission should have a discussion of whether or not an A two survey is required for the, for an application for the activities, um, or if it's something that could possibly be waived. As you just want to disclose that that decision will only be relevant to the Inlet Wetlands and Watercourses Agency that we can't speak for planning and zoning and whether or not they would be able to, to waive that requirement. Um, so we've got, um, survey number one, I'll say, or twelve oh nine as filed on the land records, shows the property before it was, um, divided. So this is the body shop building, um, and this is, I believe, that shed that we were talking about, that that was, uh, I believe twenty-nine feet off of the property line. Um, and then back here is what is now the Branford Land Trust property. Scrolling down to seventeen thirty, we've got, um, the subject property split off into what its current day configuration is. Um, so this is the auto body building. And again, this is current day Branford Land Trust property. And then this is the twenty sixteen survey that was being discussed, um, showing of the, the Branford Land Trust property. And the, um, and then I believe this is the auto body building here and again that shed, um. So if you were to measure based off of the survey and the GIS, that, that rear property line doesn't line up. Um, so I definitely think that having at least the boundary marked out would be helpful in knowing exactly where that property boundary is. Um, I think that before we get too far ahead of ourselves, I think the commission is probably going to want to hear some information from uh, detailants about what their operation in the tent is. Um, I think considerations as far as a site plan would be, uh, what information would you need to be able to make a decision? Um, you need a A two survey showing what the impervious area is, the extent. Would you be looking for stormwater management? Would maybe a vegetated buffer along that rear of the, the pavement area formalizing? You know, kind of what has historically been used as a parking area? Potentially acceptable. Um, I think these are the things that are, uh, you know, the things that pop up into my head, um.
This is Commissioner Baserman. Jamie, is the tent on the existing paved area?
Yes. Yeah. So the, um, tent is on the paved area. I believe it's where the paved area has been exten- extended. So you can see the edge of pavement here, um, you can kind of, it looks like something was here previously. That's where, uh, that, that storage trailer was. It has been relocated closer to the auto body building. Um, there is a, a small shed behind, uh, the tent, which they use to store their equipment when it's not in use, um.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So maybe we'll, uh, we'll hear about, uh, what you guys want to do.
Okay. Uh, so if, Jamie, if you could put the, um, the picture of the tent, the front of the tent, to have that, okay. So inside this, this tent, this came to be, uh, this whole setup, um, was designed because it's next to a watershed area. Um, I had, used to be in construction and had some contacts. Um, and was able to come up with this and in, inside of this tent, we have, um, one foot by, uh, one foot by one foot by twenty-four foot, uh, water booms on each side of the tent to keep any wash water, um, that's generated, uh, from getting off through the sides. And in the rear, as Jamie, uh, showed earlier, I put a trench drain into a twelve inch distribution box. Um, from there, so each, I, I want to clarify something so everybody can understand this. We're, we are not a car wash. Um, and that's never what we aspire to be. Uh, what, what my son and wife do are, uh, it's kind of an upscale car detailing business. So the car washing part is a very, very small portion of our operations. Uh, and at most we would do two car washes a day. And with the, uh, high-end pressure washer and spray lance, which is kind of the spray gun you, you spray the, the cars with and a certain tip, uh, it reduces the water consumption greatly to the amount of five gallons, five to seven gallons max per car. Uh, and on his best day, because he's doing such specialized operations, two cars would be the most he would do in a day. So it's generating anywhere from ten to fifteen gallons of water a day. Uh, and I don't know if you have a picture of that hot seat vacuum, Jamie?
I don't, but I do have the manuals.
Okay. So, uh, in addition to the tent and, and water booms and whatnot, uh, we purchased his vacuum. It's very expensive. Uh, two thousand dollar, which is a vacuum, which also has a sump pump inside of it. So the the vacuum can hold, I think it's seventy-five gallons. Uh, so it's vacuumed up with that gray hose that Jamie showed, which is a two-inch hose. Uh, and then it has a, uh, a spigot off the side, which you can, we attach a garden hose, three-quarter inch garden hose. And we wheel this, it has wheels and we wheel this inside the building to a slop sink. So the vacuum has a two-stage grit sa- separator. So all solids are captured. Uh, it's a pretty amazing system. Uh, and we dispose of solids through the garbage. Um, so we're about six to eight thousand dollars into just trying to ensure that we don't, uh, you know, pollute the environment. My stepmother was part of, uh, uh, land, president of land trust for years and, uh, kind of is a always at the dinner table, the environment. And, you know, she's a lifelong resident of Branford. She knew exactly where we were doing it. And she was one of the proponents of me going above and beyond to establish this kind of procedure when, when I thought it was kind of overkill. Um, but I'm, I'm hoping, uh, you know, we're a very small business. As you can see, it's a mother and son owned business. Um, and we just came off a winter of, you know, two months of no business. Uh, so when I, I was told that, uh, we might need to do an A two survey of the property, uh, for a business that was, is barely staying alive was really a, uh, a shock and I, or, or praying that, that you will favor it in giving us, granting us a waiver of needing to do, incur that type of expense for a small little business. But I, I let my wife and my son speak on the business, you know? That's the way, you know, the health of the business and, and where we're at.
Yeah, I think, um, just to reiterate, uh, when we, we took on this, um, endeavor almost two years ago or two years ago, we really decided that we definitely wanted to set ourselves apart from a car wash. And I know that you, um, all have probably seen, there's been a lot popping up all over the place and we wanted to really separate ourselves from that. And, um, we actually, the name of the Detailant Salon is actually based on the lance that we use in the, the shop, in the, the shed as, uh, David, David had mentioned, to cut down the water. Um, but Logan, um, can attest to the type of cars he brings in and the minimal use of the water. And really we have it down to a found, fine science in terms of, um, what we want to get accomplished every day. And that includes environmental, satisfied customers and also do what's right within the town.
We're a member of Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, we are. We're a member of the Chamber of Commerce and, um, we're just trying to get off the ground in Branford. We've been in Branford personally with family for a long time. And now we were happy to come in with our business in town.
This is Commissioner Baserman. Question, what, what other than water, what chemicals are used in the facility?
Uh, so for chemicals in the wash bay itself, in the tent, it's only going to be one car soap, which we do have the SDS for. It's not.
MSDS.
M MSDS, it's not really. Do we have, do we have that? Oh, we do have that. Okay, perfect. So yeah, so it's
He was right. The SDS is right. We don't call them MSDS anymore. MSDS were, that changed.
How to date yourself without dating yourself?
Good job, Logan.
So yeah, so this was choosing this as my car soap to use in there was not like, kind of like he said, a lot of thought went into this. It's not, I can tell you, it's definitely not a cheap car soap. Um, you know, a lot of cars. Yeah, so it's biodegradable. Um, out of all car soaps out there, this was definitely my best option, you know, for
For the environment.
For the environment, for what we're using it for. Also, nothing's going into the environment directly. I want to reiterate that. So I'd also if if there'd be another meeting or at the very least, I'd welcome anyone, anyone on the board, anyone to come see in person or view pictures of the wash setup and the tent itself on how we actually have on top of those water booms. We also have essentially a cat, a, you know, a catch. So all of that, that that, say, any overspray, even water, clean water, if you will. Isn't going to get out from there. All of it is captured, all of it's done, all of it's gone, done, captured, vacuumed up, taken out of there, even, you know, everything in the buckets, everything.
Um, all your the the bulk of this is uh, jobs are done inside a facility underneath the uh, stereo works, so inside the building. So it's more high end buffing, uh, stripping of paint, polishing, interiors, odor elimination, steam cleaning. So like I said, it's a really tiny piece of the operation is there. And it, we even hate to say car wash, because it's uh, you know, if we had our our druthers, we would not even do the washing itself. We would do the the rest of the detailing.
And and only only that soap is used in all of the detailing, or are there other products that you're using to do that detailing?
In the shed, in that shed area, it's this one product.
So in terms of anything that's done outdoors, that that is the only chemical that that is introduced out there and nothing is, it's not even, you know, introduced, if you will. Um, that is the only one that's used used there and it's contained everything within the wash bay, but in terms of chemicals that I use detailing, obviously, there's waxes and things that I use separately. That's all done within my eh, within the bay. It's all done inside. No, nothing, you know.
Into the ground.
No drains, no anything, so.
There's no water.
We spent five thousand dollars on floor for the shop. Uh, it's a polyaspartic floor, so nothing could seep through it.
Yeah, it's not un- uncoated concrete, and then also for the record, rags are all brought home and washed at our house in Prospect.
And it it just a clarification question, you said that the garden hose from that vacuum enters into the slop sink?
Yes.
And then the drain from the slop sink goes where?
To the septic system?
Which East Shore did, what, as Jamie did say, they were at that meeting with us, which they did not have an issue as those solids being cleared out from there. They said there's no issue from that.
And is the is the drain in the rear that Jamie had the picture of? Uh, is that uh, part and parcel of this? Um, uh, this uh, tent system? Or is that something that was applied for this tent system?
That was applied by us. Uh, we've tried to figure something out to capture the water. Um, that would not pull up, so he was standing in water. Uh, while he's washing, we we initially tried a tarp, which ended up, you know, you're in ankle deep water if he didn't drain him all, you know, vacuum him up. So we we came up with this drain to get it outside of there and so we can vacuum it up nice and cleanly.
Jamie Frederick and the Welling agent, in the back, you can see one of the um, booms they were talking about earlier, the wattles to help keep the water draining to the rear of the tent. Um, they have one on each side. Uh, can you speak to the commissioner a little bit about what we talked about on site as far as uh, rain and freezing conditions and how you handle that? With your drainage?
I couldn't hear that.
Uh, can you speak a bit about how you handle rain and freezing conditions with your your drainage?
Uh, well, with freezing conditions, we we make sure at night we drain it out. Um, make sure anything, even rainwater is out of it, so in case it, you know, freezes over. We've had a few nights where it did freeze, but uh, I have a uh, a pond heater. We have a koi pond at home. Uh, so if it was really inclement, very, very cold, which we had a few, uh, I can put a pond heater inside of that twelve by twelve box uh, and keep that uh, you know, at least liquid enough so we can vacuum it up. As as far as rain comes, you know, uh, we try and divert any water, so it doesn't pass through the shop and go into the drain and uh, potentially rinse anything out. Uh, we try and keep everything separate.
Also, at this moment, we're still working on blocking all, you know, rainwater, which is not, you know, ma- a big area, but just from even entering the tent completely. Because as of right now, any rainwater that comes in there, we're just, you know, presuming, obviously, as ours, and we're just going to take care of it. You know, as as we should, as if it was wash water out of out of a gun, you know, if you will. So we're looking to hundred percent block any snow runoff, water runoff, any, anything, you know, from coming in. Obviously, it makes my day to day longer dealing with it. Um, as well as like Jamie said, with the with with the ice, you know, the runoff will continue to fill that up, you know. So when when I do have the ice, we do have to maintain that and keep the ice melted, you know, if that happens on the rare occasion, like we said, on the few times that it was full of runoff and it did freeze, we had a block of ice that we did have to thaw out, and it definitely is very time consuming, but it's something that I'm willing to do to operate.
Commissioner Bassman, any other commissioner have questions about the operation itself?
Not really. This is Commissioner Goklowski. Uh, just one point of interest as far as an A two survey is concerned. Um. I mean, I I've had to go before the commissions in the past and um, I will tell you one thing, I was very upset when I had to have an A suit, A two survey done with my property. But I will tell you one thing, it paid for itself ten times over because any issues that rose up after that A two survey was submitted to the town, I was I was in like Flint. There were no issues. You know, you could be a penny wise and a pound foolish, and that's all I'm going to say on that matter.
Really, it, I understand what you're saying, but we don't own the property. Uh, so that's my, we're we're this tiny little thing, uh, a- and barely afloat as it is, so like that that would cripple us. It would absolutely cripple us. And uh, one other note, uh, you talked about vegetative uh, barrier. It has a pretty well established uh, growth along that whole line. Uh, in the springtime, you can't see through, uh, you can't see into the swamp. Uh, it's a a very definitive line, and I I did want to ask, there there ha- there happens to be a series of piles of dirt, gravel, whatever they are. Um, they're almost continuous behind, you know, our tent and the driveway property. Uh, I don't know if that would be an advantage to, you know, inland water to connect them uh, to actually create a berm. Uh, or would that do a hindrance with storm wa- runoff or what have you of the property? So if you're right in the tree line, within a foot of that tree line, there's a series of piles of gravel. With that fallen tree being on top of one of them, that it's kind of mounded up. There's there's a a pile of gravel. It's about one to three feet tall in spots.
Jamie Frederick and Welling agent, I'm not an engineer, um, but I do recall out on site, there was concerns about the fact that parking lot floods. If you create a berm and then it, the water rises above that berm.
Would hold it.
It it could hold it in place longer than normally would.
Because we've had a flood all the way past the front of the tent before. Which is a a nightmare for operations.
So one of the reasons why I mentioned a vegetated buffer is because there there certainly has been some recent activity on site. Um, you know, with the repaving, a little bit of expansion of pavement, the the shed and the use within the shed. So I think that um, a vegetated buffer, I understand that there is some, you know, there vegetation on site or if it's between wetland and the the activity, but there's certainly a lot of disturbance in that area, and there has been a lot of historic use in that area, which I understand the current property owner is trying to clear up and address. But I think that having a vegetated buffer would help address a couple of things. It would help address a little bit of stormwater quality. It would help keep the envelope of activity, you know, a certain envelope. Um, and it could also potentially help a little bit with the flooding by having some more established vegetation that would um interact with that water. Um. And there are, I think that obvi- I think we had discussed on site, obviously, you don't want to select the right plants. You don't want to select something that can stand flooded conditions. Um, I see the property owner has his hand raised.
Yes, um, just if I may, we we did go over that, um, and I was not opposed to that, like I said. If that's something that will expedite this and it's advantageous, and everybody agrees to that. Um, I've already been in contact with a couple landscapers of different vegetations that can handle uh, the root system can handle high water contact. So again, I'm being proactive on that measure. I'm not opposed to it. If it helps out with this whole situation, if that's what needs to be done, that's what needs to be done. Again, I'm not trying to make life more difficult. I'm just trying to clean up the property and and like I said, where I repaved was just all broken pavement. It was getting cars muddy, stuff was getting into the ground. Anyway, I was just trying to again, break it. I'm just trying to make the property back to what it was to the best of my ability.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, can you put up the uh, survey uh, that uh, I guess Criscolo Engineering did? Um. And and to the, to the question of A two um, survey, wh- what elements would be um would be available with the A two that we don't see on this uh, drawing?
Well, first of all, this is a survey of the land trust property. It's not a survey of the the subject property. It shows the subject property, but that that property is boundaries minus the one that it shares with the land trust wouldn't be of survey quality. Um. Necessarily anyways. Um. So I do see that Bill Horn has his hand raised, but I'll try to address your question and then we can jump over. Um, so it would give, you know, meets and bounds of the property. It would show the existing conditions. So like we said, that shed's already been removed. Um, that was on the old survey. We jump back over here. Oh, actually, it's not on this one. Um, it would show the extent of existing pavement, so you would have an impervious calculation. Um, wetlands doesn't have an impervious requirement or limit. Um, planning and zoning does, but a lot of times inland lands will look at it from a stormwater quality, stormwater management standpoint. Um, and you know, if you were looking for formal stormwater management, that would be shown on there. Um, a lot of times you'll have formal parking areas. This is an older site. I don't know that it ever really had formal parking. Um. And that's again, getting kind of into planning and zoning and whether or not that would be a waivable requirement on their end. Unfortunately, we don't have a town planner or an assistant town planner at this moment, so I'm not sure how quickly the um, property and business owners will get a solid answer on that. Um, the default requirement is an A two survey, and I think it's a lot less likely to get waived on the planning and zoning side of things. But obviously, I can't speak for planning and zoning. So I just wanted the commission to be aware of that in the sense of this might be kind of an open timeline, at least on the planning and zoning side of things. We won't be able to necessarily get an answer. Concrete one way or the other, um, as far as whether it could be waived in in near future. I believe they have made an offer to somebody for the town planner position, um, but I don't have details on when they would be starting. Um, so while you guys uh, digest that. I guess we'll see what Bill Horn has to say.
Uh, just a little history on the Criscolo survey. Um, when the land trust acquired the property in twenty ten, I think, not twenty sixteen. Uh, we engaged Criscolo to provide us with a survey. The um, the owners, the the property had been in the same family since sometime in the mid eighteen sixties. When David Sliny and Gorden Brown, uh, Gorden hmm. Um, and the an owner went out and basically marked out by um, blazing trees where the where the battery was. So uh, what we were told that Criscolo did was to go back through the land records and find as many surveys and deeds as they could that would indicate where the batteries of the adjoining properties were. Um, do a survey based on that, and we got what was on the inside of that line. Um, I'll point out that there um, there are some pipes that are called out in the survey, um. The um, on the the far side of the condo uh, development, which is just to the um southwest of of the quite of the property here, eighty North Main Street. And then at the uh, corner of the land trust property. Um, so uh, there there are markers there that have been determined by an A two survey that they could measure off of.
Yeah, so Jamie Frederick and the Welling agent, to clarify, this property boundary would be of A two survey quality. It's these these side property lines that uh, wouldn't necessarily. Um, and based off of this survey, I did measure the shed um, or the tent structure. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, and I'm not sure that I have it written down, but um, based on the infield measurement from the rear corner of this structure to the rear corner of uh, from here to here essentially. Um, and the distance from here to here on this map, it looks like the tent could be within the the subject property. Um. So I I think that the questions for the commission are would you be looking for an A two survey or is a less formal site plan with a boundary mark out potentially acceptable? Um. We can't require offsite wetland investigation, but would you be looking for an investigation to confirm whether or not there's any onsite wetland soils? Um.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, it, A two um, survey, i- i- is that a classification and are there other classifications of surveys that could be appropriate here?
There are other classifications of surveys, so yeah, A two is referring to the level of accuracy. Um. This is that's kind of up for the commission to determine, so I I I mean, I would imagine the commission is going to want some sort of site plan showing
Right.
the existing conditions, so I guess alternatively, whether a sketch of where the the shed, the the tent structure is and approximate limits of pavement is acceptable, or I mean, there's a class D survey, which is done by a surveyor, but is not of, it doesn't necessarily require any research. It also doesn't have any specified level of accuracy to it, so I'm not sure.
And and no soil? No, no soil assessment?
Soil's assessment would be separate, so yeah, I I I think I think the key boxes I I have are um. Survey, property boundary, wetland assessment, stormwater management. And maybe in tangent with that, uh, planting or some sort of boundary to make sure that, especially if you are considering waiving a survey requirement, to make sure that there's no you know, help reduce any chances of change over time. So that what you're agreeing upon now would be a little bit more codified in some. So again, we can't speak for planning and zoning.
But this is Commissioner Boda. I I I think part of the the driver for the A two is uh and and for anything, right? Is always with the the um the the function of it is to ensure that we are protecting wetlands, like that that is always the underpinning of any reason why we why we would do anything and 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 so in this instance, the the particular line that we're trying to figure out that is between impact and the wetlands is a line that is not currently in question. Is that a fair assumption? That's that is the line that um we have a pretty clear, it's not, it is not currently debated. It's not being argued by one party that the line is in one place and another party that the line is in a very different place. So we have a map from Criscolo and um we could potentially have somebody go out and and stake that line. Or have I have I misunderstood what's been presented?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I I know, I agree that it's been represented that the property owner could have that that property line staked out based off of this twenty sixteen survey.
Okay, so um, I thi- I I I think based on that, I again, I I agree with you, Jamie. We we cannot speak for planning and zoning and they they very well have you do an A two survey. From a wetlands perspective, I I don't think that, you know, a five or six thousand dollar survey, that's that's not for this situation, what what needs to happen. I I certainly understand, like, that's so the point of a notice of violation um. And the the infraction doesn't rise to that level of um mitigation, right? You don't need to 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 have to invest that that much. Um, but I, so one, I I think that the that those lines need to be staked in. Um, I do think that you need to come in with a plan um, with a some kind of site plan that takes Criscolo's property boundary and um incorporates that onto a new site plan um, that shows your limits, uh, the current conditions, the existing conditions on the site, the limit of disturbance. The real um like the the legal property boundary and then I would recommend um proposing a a kind of formal planting boundary so that that line is not crossed in the future. Um, do we, um, and then I may have missed it in the beginning, um, do we know the distance between um, where the activity was and the wetland itself?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, agent, excuse me, we do not, I do not know for sure, especially since we don't know where the property line is on the on the ground. Um, whether the wetland is onsite or if it is off.
You said that we we couldn't.
I think it's pretty close to that property line where the the edge of the wetland is. Um. So again, I'll jump over to the GIS map, so I unfortunately don't have.
We can't.
Labels.
It's the land trust property.
The land trust property, so yeah, the the wetland line is probably fairly close to the line property line between the land trust property and eighty North Main Street. So the commission would be within their rights if you want to to request a wetland delineation of eighty North Main Street, and it might be that there are no wetlands on the subject property. They're all on adjacent property. Um, we cannot require a wetland investigation offsite, but you would at least then know whether or not the wetlands were on the property and that they were at least that far away from the wetland. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, just so you know.
To say your name for the record.
Oh, Al Rusgrove, owner of eighty North Main Street. Um, talking to Mr. Criscolo, he is not only doing the stakeout, he is gonna do a a sketch, a site plan. And he said he'll even go a little above and beyond and I'll pay a little more for, that he will actually mark where the concrete is as adjacent and how far it is either over over my property or within my property. He will measure it.
Who are you talking to? Are you talking to Jim Peretti?
Um, I'm talking to like uh all of you about the Criscolo, the engineering, about the what the stake survey I'm gonna have done, the A two stake survey.
I'm sorry, but you're talking to Mr. Peretti or Criscolo Engineering?
Um, I'm talking to Criscolo Engineering. He is gonna provide that to to you guys. I am gonna have a site plan done, like he is gonna have a drawing, a sketch. He's gonna measure how far the pavement is either God forbid, it's over my property line or within my property line and how far it is from the actual soil. He's gonna put all those measurements and have all that stuff on a drawing and a site plan for you. And um, just to reiterate, like you were saying, like an A two survey, I agree it would be beneficial, but that's a survey of the whole property. I mean, most of the stuff in question is this back line of the property. And I am doing an A two, even though it's a stake, it's still A two survey quality, which is the most accurate. So I am paying to make a clear cut property line, so everybody knows exactly where their property begins and ends. So we can have a clear understanding on if I am over it or if I am not. And um, as far as zoning, I had talked to Jane and Jane had said to me, if I get this stakeout done and you guys are okay with it and my pavement is within my property line, she said that was fine for her.
I I think that's that's a good step, um, but I think the wetland soils assessment is a kind of a separate issue. The sketches, the the sketch that you're gonna get from Criscolo Engineering and the detail associated with that addresses, you know, part of the equation, but the other issue is where are the wetlands? So this is Commissioner Bassman. Commissioner Boda, would you add, you know, a a soils assessment by a a qualified wetland scientist to the
Yeah.
information you're looking for?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I I don't think that's out of um, that's out of bounds. And I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Rusgrove, you you you've tripped me up a little bit. Um. It's the firm, right?
Criscolo is the engineering firm that is doing the survey. You did it for the land trust who does a lot of work.
No, no, I understand. I just, you're not talking about Mr. Criscolo.
No, I'm talking about the firm. I'm sorry.
Mr. Criscolo has left us. He's a very nice man. We miss him.
Um, I I do have a question. The soil, whatever you're talking about, just so I'm clear on my end. What does that determine? What is wetlands and what is not wetlands?
So in, so in the state of Connecticut, um, what is wetlands and what is not wetland is determined by soil type. So a soil scientist will go out and do an investigation. Um, they are not nearly as expensive as an A two, not not even a fraction as much as an A two. Um, and they will go out and they take a series of soil samples and they will determine um, where you have wetland and where you do not have wetland.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I can give you a list of wetland scientists. However, I also know that um Criscolo Engineering has a wetland scientist that they can um provide, so let me know if you want the list or if you wanna go through Criscolo for that.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, you had four points. I think one of them was stormwater management? Was that one of your four?
Yeah, so um, for the purposes of the the site plan that you're looking for, would the commission be looking for formal stormwater management? Or I know that Commissioner Boda mentioned having a planting boundary. Would 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 that be an acceptable balance with the the change in activity on the site um, for the commission? There is a bit of a a burn area between the wetland and and the site already.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like they don't have catch basins or anything, right?
I don't think there's any formal stormwater management back there right now. Um.
Would would the site plan have, uh, you know, topographical gradients on it?
Not for what we were talking about, no.
Right.
It 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 may be, I I mean, I think that it it may be that um perhaps that the 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 person um who does the 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 soil, um, the soil survey, the wetland assessment um, can make some general recommendation for um stormwater management. Um. Soft, 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 we'll say soft stormwater management.
This is Commissioner Begmon. When we're talking about stormwater management, are we talking about for the paved areas and the little new tent structure or for the whole property?
Well, it's hard, it's, I, we don't know, like, because the thing is, is like, it there's no, if there's no catch basins, right? And we don't know how it's graded. We don't know how it's engineered. Right? And so that's what an A two survey would do. An A two survey would tell us how how the whole site is pitched and what way the water is flowing and which which direction.
Assuming that the survey also had.
Assuming it had what?
Uh, assuming the the survey had uh elevational data. A two is horizontal. Um, but um, so yeah, I think what we would be looking for is potentially stormwater management, whether it's quality or storage related relative to any increases in impervious area essentially. Um, so given that there's no formal stormwater management currently on site and the elevation of the site relative to the um wetland, I don't know that there's a whole lot of opportunity for for stormwater management system.
Right.
In balance with the the level of activity that has occurred. Um. So that's why I I had mentioned potentially the plantings, but I don't wanna, you know, at the next meeting, say, wait, why don't you have infiltrators? Granted, if the area floods, we are kinda already know an infiltrator isn't gonna work. Um, so is everyone kind of generally acceptable with pursuing a vegetative?
I, this is Commissioner Papantonis. I have a question. Is we're dealing with a notice of violation, we don't have an application before us yet, right? So are aren't we a little ahead of ourselves?
Sure, so this is kind of a pre-application meeting, if you will, wrapped up into a notice of violation. So, you know, nothing's binding, but it it is kind of helpful to have this dialogue so that um, the applicant knows what information they need to submit. Um. So.
But again, we we don't completely know what we have because.
Absolutely, and we don't know if there's enough space for a vegetative buffer.
Right.
Understood.
So so the take, the 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 takeaway is we are concerned about uh, given the information that we have, how stormwater is gonna be treated and in the application, somehow that needs to get addressed, I guess, is the takeaway from the discussion.
So if I could, Dave Resnick here, um. The the, nothing has changed. Is where where we put our tent, it's on pavement, which was paved over existing busted up pavement. So the stormwater has never changed even since Mr. Rusgrove bought the property. It's been the exact same as it's been for a hundred years. Nothing, absolutely nothing has changed. And when we placed that tent, it was just on top of asphalt. It's on with uh duckbill anchors. Um, it's like a temporary structure and it's not even into the dirt. It's right drilled into the asphalt. So in no way did this this tent, which is kind of a pass through, um, you know, it's got soft sides and soft front and back, in no way impeded water flow in any way.
I I think it it certainly looks like there's been a minor increase in impervious area. Um. I think that the approach the commission is looking to take is is, you know, comparable with past practice um relative to the amount of activity. I don't think it was a significant change necessarily. Um, but there definitely has been some modifications on site. And so I think to kind of codify, address what the existing condition is and make sure we have something moving forward that can be a base level for any future modifications that the property owner may wanna have do or that any of the tenants may wanna do um, is kind of where where we need to be through this process.
Okay.
Any other helpful comments from the commission for um for this NOB?
Um, one question for the.
Is two weeks, is two weeks a um, a two, a tight timeframe or?
That's true.
That feels really fast.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. So what what would be a good date for this to come back?
We've got April tenth and April twenty fourth as our meetings in April. Um. So I mean, the first step is having the property. I mean, I I guess I would say April twenty fourth would probably be ideal if that works for the property owner and the the tenant, um, because we don't know what that that boundary mark out is gonna look like, so they might have some additional things to respond to that we you know, aren't necessarily aware of. Um, so it gives them a little bit of time without giving, you know, too much, I think. Uh, does that seem reasonable to the applicant or future applicants?
True.
So Al, Al, what do you think as the owner of the property? You're on mute.
Al, Al Rusgrove, eighty North Main Street. Um, I might be away that day. I'll check, but if it's Zoom, I could still arrange to to be on the meeting. Um, I'm just need a little clarification. I still don't know, like, between now and then, what I'm is what I'm supposed to be doing, because I would hate to drop a little over a thousand dollars on this boundary A two survey and then you come back and say it's 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 not good for me, because then I'm just throwing away more money that I really don't have at the moment. So I I'm just want a little bit of clarification of what needs to be done between now and April twentieth. Like, what are we proposing? That's all.
So actually, this is Commissioner Boda. I I would say if this goes to P N Z, Jamie, and they say they want an A two, then that would suffice for our our limits, right? Then we don't also need our 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 a different map, right?
If planning and zoning says they need an A two survey.
Right.
We wouldn't.
Two survey would certainly suffice for. Two survey would certainly suffice for.
We would still need our. Our wetland assessment, cause that's something different, but.
Do we wanna give him a little bit longer so that way hopefully there's a town? You know, should, should a town planer, I, I don't, I don't know what this.
I don't know that they'll get an answer as to whether the A two survey could be waived until they submit an application of planning and zoning, um. I don't know.
We can always, I mean, the thing, this is Commissioner Boda, we can always put a date and move it.
Alright, so check in April twenty fourth and if not, we'll discuss where.
Yeah, we can, we can put the twenty fourth now and, and. Um, you know, if, if the property owner is looking April twelfth or whatever the other. Date is, is like, you know what, I, I haven't, I haven't heard from P and Z or whomever. Um, this isn't happening, you just scratch it off of the agenda.
This is Commissioner Goklowski, uh, we were talking about getting a soil scientist report, shouldn't we just go ahead and request that from the, um. Property owner slash applicant slash tenant, um, cause isn't that gonna come up? In the near future, even if we do have an A two survey?
Well, that would all be part of one application, we wouldn't piecemeal, so, an applicant, we don't piecemeal an application.
No, I understand that, but shouldn't he go ahead and start the process? Cause he's looking for clarification, what we're gonna be looking for, I just don't wanna, I don't want. I don't wanna wait two weeks and then tell him that we have to get a soil sample. And then he's gotta wait another two to three weeks to get somebody out there to look at, to test the soil. I'm just trying to move the process along a little bit.
So I will, I will follow up after this meeting with a list of the things that we've gone over. Including the soils investigation, um, you know, the, the mark out of the rear prop, the things that the. In the Wetland Commission has discussed that they want, and then the app, like, that the property owner. Business owner can follow up with planning and zoning and then kind of start to form their plan from there. And hopefully we'll have an update, an application and an update at the April twenty fourth meeting. And if not, you know, we'll at least have an update that it's being worked on, um. And if there are any questions regarding those requirements, I'm more than happy to follow up, I feel like I have a much better understanding of. What the commission would be looking for at this point. And certainly any, anything that should planning and zoning require an A two survey would. Satisfy the things that we've been talking about, um, so.
Well, cheers.
Yes, sir.
Oh yeah, Al Rusgrove, eighty North Main Street, just so I'm clear, so if planning and zoning. Is okay with the A two stakeout, that means that would suffice for you guys also, is that what I'm understanding?
Right.
As long as there's a sketch of the proposed, uh, of, of the existing conditions and proposed planting area.
Okay. And, and, and I'm also assuming you want the soil acid on, which I understand is pretty much a given, no matter what.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, see you on the twenty fourth, hopefully.
Thank you.
And just a clarification, that application would need to be smi- submitted April twenty third for review on the twenty fourth, but we can dive into the details.
You, you'll put that in the letter, JB, right?
Yes, yeah, I'll make sure all that information's included in.
I'll, I'll rush screw over again, Jimmy, I could just contact you tomorrow about. Or Monday or whatever about the application and all that stuff.
Sure, yeah, I'll hopefully get an email out to you tomorrow, um, so then if you wanna kinda try and digest it a bit and then contact me early next week, we can.
Sure.
Item six, application per receipt, we don't have any, we have no agent approvals on item seven, but we have some other business. In the Wetland twenty three oh five oh two thirty five Bayberry Lane, room addition where a deck exists. Second floor addition, which I think, uh, we talked about, and then there's a permit modification. To allow an additional extension of three feet, Jamie?
Yeah, a permit was issued, um, for the activities listed under section A. And essentially they're looking to modify the, um, room addition off of the house a little bit. To extend it an additional three feet, um, so let me just pull up some of the materials. So, of course, I didn't throw a GIS map in here. Um, but I think a lot of you were on the commission when this was before the commission initially, um, single family house. Uh, looking to make some renovations, I believe, um. Put an accessory apartment over the garage, I may be wrong with that, but a second floor of the garage, in addition, off of the back of the house. The most of the rear yard is, um, identified as wetlands, um, including a substantial amount of the lawn. Um, so I'm not sure whether it makes more sense to start with a picture or, um. Site map, but I'm gonna start with the picture, I think.
This is Commissioner Goklowski, I think this was my very first sidewalk.
It may have been, um. So here we're seeing the back of the house, the deck is where the proposed addition is, uh. Proposed to go, and over on the right hand side of the picture, you can see the garage that, um, had the second floor addition. So essentially, they're replacing where the deck is with an addition and they're looking to bump it out an additional three feet. Where my cursor is, is designated a wetland based off of wetland soils, um. So it is, it is a unique site and a unique wetland area. Um, given that it is in a wetland, I cannot review this administratively, um, so. This is the approved plan that's on file. Uh, we've got the existing house, the existing garage, the wetland line goes through where the existing deck is. And slightly larger than the existing deck, we've got the, um, proposed addition, existing deck, a hundred and ninety square feet. To be removed or replaced with an addition at two hundred and thirty seven. The proposed modification. We've got the same thing, except it's bumped out another three feet and. Yeah, and they're proposing this little, um, landing out the. Hopefully there's a door there, um, so instead of it being. Two hundred and thirty seven square feet, it is proposed to be two hundred and ninety square feet. Um, and the additional square footage is within what was designated wetland soil area. So, um, the project engineer could be present, but given the circumstances, I thought I would. See if the commission thought it was actionable, if you think that, and we need representation to review this, we can. Table it and continue it to the next meeting, um.
Jamie. Go ahead, Da- David.
Um, I, from what I remember, recall and remember, this site was very completely. Um, grass area, they, they had lawn planted. All around the property and was meticulously maintained, um, and I just pulled up. Um, street view of the property, um, it happens to be an old Zillow. Um, listing of the property showing the, um, some pretty good area views of, of the land, um. And you, you can see the whole property is covered with lawn, um.
With Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I just wanna remind commissioners that we should be looking at the record and not going outside of the record to find. Uh, additional information that the rest of the commission can't see, um, but yeah, I do have a picture. And the subject area is definitely a maintained lawn area.
This is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, is, is the deck on, on tubes as the, as understructure?
No, it is, um, from what I recall. Not a crawl space, but not, not a foot, not a here foundation either.
And, and, and is that to be extended?
Yes, that would be extended, so let's see. Have their revised. Um, but it is my understanding that the, the. Foundation would be extended.
This is Commissioner Begmon, so what we're looking at is an increased. Square footage of, you know, taking away of that lawn and, and by making it seventy feet instead of. Fourteen and then adding a little thing to step down on, right? So in terms of impact to the wetland. We're looking at an increase of some sort of impervious surface, because there was a deck before and now there's gonna be a roof structure. Bigger than what the deck was. Right, so, I mean, you think that's what we're trying to take into consideration, is that correct?
The increase in the impervious area and. Ground. Disturbance.
Ground disturbance underneath, like what kind of condition? And are they changing?
Originally approved.
This Commissioner Begmon, are they changing what they're doing to the runoff from this addition or is that still the same?
I did not clarify, but I believe that is still the same and that, that could certainly be, you know. Um, if you are willing to act this evening distinguished as part of your consideration. And that there's any changes that it would have to be reviewed, um, so previously it was that it would discharge at grade and. Runoff slash infiltration.
This is Commissioner Begmon, I said, it, it is kinda strange, right, because. It's a maintained lawn and we've had other, I think we've had a few others. In somewhat similar, so. I don't know, I think to me it's, um, do we need to know what they're doing into the ground, maybe? Do we? Before we approve it, or do we think that it's a small enough change that we?
We could ask for clarification and I believe that the engineer probably could be present for the next meeting if, if the commission thought that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be good to hear from the individual that's. Involved, what's gonna actually happen, um, rather than try to make a decision kind of in a vacuum here.
Alright, anyone feel differently? And I think we can start. You're doing this and I will follow up with them to inform you such. Continued to March twenty.
This is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, had you, um, contacted the, uh, homeowner at thirty five and he couldn't make it tonight or?
I, I was talking with the project engineer about this, it came in lately, yesterday. Um, given that we have a public hearing at the next meeting, I thought I would throw it on the agenda in case the question was. Um, but obviously if you're not comfortable and you have questions, we should and will continue.
Okay, number nine, correspondence, uh, the cause meeting was held, I understand it was a good meeting and we have. Folks that attended that they wanna share their thoughts with us.
This is Commissioner Boda.
It was that good, huh?
It was good, I recommend going, uh. It's, it's, uh, it's always worth going, I, it, it, um. I don't know what to say, there's a lot of information, there's a, there's a lot of information and if you, um. I think, um, if you're into the kind of research end of it, some of that happens later in the day, it's a long day. Um, and there's quite a mix between some of the research components. And, but there's also a balance with some of the regulatory stuff, it's, um. So we do, they, they, there's always an Army Corps update, um, which is really geared more toward. Um, folks who work, um, either for like deep or. Are applying for permits, so not necessarily geared toward, um, commissioners necessarily. Um, but then there's updates, um, and, but it's always really interesting stuff, so, um. They today, um, are, are at the cause meeting, they talked about ecological impacts of. Uh, light pollution, we've got a really interesting update on, um. The, um, emergency permitting that happened as a result of the August storm. Um, and how that all worked and some of the kind of, um. The, the processes that, that then came out of that. Um, and then some of the cl- climate impacts in Connecticut and how we're adapting. Um, so just, it, it's, it's definitely, um, it's a nice day. To spend and to learn about what's going on, um, another interesting one was the, um. Hammock River, uh, restoration, the work that's being done for the salt marshes. I always have trouble with, this is such a long name for such a tiny little bird, salt marsh, sharp ta- sharp tail, salt marsh sparrow. I, the order I always grew up, um, salt marsh sparrow.
Yeah.
That tip through, anyway. Um, so, um, some of the work that they're doing on how to protect that population, which may be up for, um. To be on the endangered species list if they don't get rid of the endangered species list altogether, and EPA altogether, so.
And the, the business, oh, the Commissioner Begmon, the businesses that have the displays of what, what all the different things that they're doing. Engineering wise and plant wise and that's really interesting to see all the organizations.
Wa- was there a theme that kinda ran through the conference or these, you know, um, uh, individual kind of. Um, presentations that really didn't have a.
Wetlands, man. Wetlands and science, like, and, uh, you know. It's, it's great to be in a room where, where, you know, if, if you say dirt, like. Twenty people look at you and be like, so is this thing a dirt soil, like? Dirt is a meaningless term, like it's great to be in a room full of people that I give you a dirty look if you say dirt, so.
Relatively little in the, uh, subject of legislative activity or?
Yeah, there's, let's say, okay, Jamie.
Uh, so there were kind of, I think, two topics, um, discussed, so the, the. Department of Deep along with, I think in, with Cackey Wick is looking to send out a survey about. Training, um, existing training and what. Commissions, municipalities might be looking for as far as training in regards to a proposed bill, um. On the topic of mandated training for commissioners, um, and then we also had an update about. Looking into F M L U type programs for wetland impacts at the state level, so it wouldn't impact anything that. You know, Branford and the Wetlands and Watercourses Agency is doing, but like say there's a DOT project, um, they would potentially be able to do. Wetland banking, um, or something like that, looks like. Commissioner Boda may have shared a document pertaining to it, um. So that's something they're looking to put forth, there are a lot of other states that handle wetland mitigation that way, it allows for larger. Mitigation projects that might be a little bit more comprehensive, it also allows for the mitigation to be done. By entities that are. Designing and implementing the plan rather than, um, a developer that would be. Developing their project and then, oh yeah, I do this well, the mitigation. Developing their project and then, oh yeah, I do this wetland mitigation, so it kinda shifts the, the focus and burden. Um, there are, are potential concerns about, you know, making sure that the mitigation isn't displaced. Um, so there was a lot of talk about making sure it's within the same watershed, um, or general watershed. And, um, I'm sure that there'll be a lot more discussion about. Um, you know, the pros and cons of that process.
Okay.
Uh, the doc I shared out was just my notes, so, um, you're, you're welcome to, yeah, ignore our typos, this is just. Yeah, but.
And we have another, uh, online virtual conference this Saturday, so.
Yeah, and I think just about everyone signed up for it.
That's great.
Wait, not this Saturday, next Saturday.
Next Saturday. Don't rush things.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I get my clock way ahead instead of just an hour, I guess. Alright, thank you all and uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.